It's six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll have Sandy and Stephanie, they'll be here shortly, they got delayed at work, but they're on their way. First order of business is recommend the school committee approve the minutes of the February 25th meeting.
So good.
Second.
Call the favor. Additions and change to the agenda. We'll be moving the public participation up to three. So that'll be right now. So we'll have that, I don't know if anyone, I'm sure someone wants to speak. What we'll do is have a spokesman, a few people speak, and also, we do have a meeting tonight, so it becomes that everyone is, if we feel that we've heard the same message from a few, we'll ask other messages, and then we'll stop the public participation. I just want to say that we do understand what you folks are saying, but we're kind of in a holding pattern. There's nothing that we can do right now. Negotiations have gone on for no longer than what we'd anticipated and hoped, but we are hoping for a resolution in the very near future. It's gone on, we've been following the rules. They've had mediation with a negotiating team, the teachers negotiating team, that didn't come to a resolution. Next step was fact finding. Fact finding, they met, we have not received a report back from the state for the fact finding, so again, we're in holding pattern until we get that report back. There's nothing we can discuss regarding negotiations. So when I say that we respect you, and we hear your message, we do. But there's nothing that we can do until that fact finding report comes back. Negotiation team, as well as the teachers, will go back to negotiations, hopefully we can come to a resolution. After 31 days of the fact that it becomes pub, after it becomes, comes to us, it becomes public after 31 days. Regarding the negotiations, we could speak to that, but at this time, we cannot. So someone who can speak?
Thank you very much Larry, and I just wanted to say that since there are a few of us here tonight who maybe wouldn't be here normally. I'm Mark Gory, I teach English here at the high school, and I'm also the president of the BREA. I really appreciate Larry, you're mentioning the protocol around what can be divulged or not divulged at this point in time. I want to speak to this a little bit further because, as you may be aware, the town of Selectmen of Booth Bay have written a letter to the editor, which has been published in the paper, and they are calling for the teachers association to reveal details about the ongoing negotiations. They have expressed in their letter to the editor that they believe the board is sworn to silence, and that the association can somehow reveal details and call for it all to be opened up. I would just like to clarify that misconception tonight. I have done that in print already, but we are also bound by the same protocols as a teacher association. So I completely concur with you that until 31 days have elapsed, after the fact finders' report has been issued, and we've returned to the table again to try to negotiate, we cannot reveal any details. So I really appreciate that. Another misconception I would like to try to clear up, which has been addressed in the paper also, is that there's the insistent idea that teachers have been involved in getting students to attend that sit-in. I have said in front of the WDME television camera, I have said online, that as the local president of the BREA, I have no knowledge of teachers instigating that sit-in. So I would really hope that, and as you have, the board would continue the protocol of silence around the details, and would, if coming across someone in public who seems not to understand that aspect of it, that we would all, teachers association and board members, educate everyone in our community about that protocol. Tonight, we do have two groups of teachers who would like to speak. One group would like to speak to changes that have been mentioned as possibly happening at Booth Bay Region Elementary School. They would like to speak to why they believe the programming as it is, is best for our children. And this, this group, while I totally agree with the idea that I think the board probably would want to hear about all of that, I want to make clear that those teachers speaking to that issue are not part of the group of teachers who are going to be speaking to, working without a current contract. Those are two separate groups of speakers.
Yeah, we'll do the budget presentation, because what is, that group that you're speaking to has to do with the budget?
It has to do with educational programming in special education, and the teachers, the teachers wanting to speak philosophically to the need to keep programming as it is.
So what we'll do is we'll have Eileen then go over the budget, then they can speak regarding, after the budget. Okay, and then, so the first one, I guess we'll have your-
Well, so you want to go to our group talking about-
Your group talking about, then we'll have the budget discussion.
Okay, alright. So we'd like, I'd like to recognize Ms. Mayne Anthony, please.
I'm trapped here, so I'm stupid.
Mayne, do you want to take my phone off?
Not really.
Then I'll stay here.
You are not going to believe me, that I really do hate standing up in front of people. I really truly do. Last week after I spoke, or not last week, but after the last meeting, I was a little frustrated and sad and disappointed, and I couldn't sleep, because of kind of the reaction to what I had to say. And at first, I started thinking, oh my gosh, it's the Charlie Brown effect. I was a teacher talking, and everybody heard wah 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 wah. And I thought, no, maybe I just wasn't clear. So it's way shorter this time. I just want to make a few points. First, I know Larry, that your mother was a teacher, and I appreciate that you understand our workday extends well beyond the hours that we put in with the students, but that was a different time. As recently as three years ago, was a much different time for teachers. For the most part, teachers were trusted and allowed to do the job they were trained to do. They were allowed to create and deliver a curriculum that addressed the unique needs of their students. They were not required to spend hours working to comply with what has become for us a moving target, as initiatives are mandated and amended at an alarming rate. We are now in a situation in which teachers are pulled away from our classrooms, and our primary responsibility to our students in order to comply with mandates. Last year, my own child was very frustrated by the amount of time her teachers were away from the classroom. She felt it was a disruption to her learning. Second, we all go into education knowing we're not going to make a lot of money. And we do realize that we are fortunate to have a rewarding career. But it is a fact that over the past few decades, the earning potential of teachers has been dropping relative to comparably educated people in other fields, and I'm not comparing us to doctors and lawyers here. In order to attract and keep good teachers, compensation has to be competitive, especially in the increasingly acrimonious politicized environment in which we find ourselves. If teachers are asked to pick up more of the healthcare burden, our take-home pay is going down. It is not unreasonable to expect that our salaries and benefits keep up the cost of living and the rest of the job market. Third, my remarks were meant kind of as a call to arms. We hear that we're respected, and I don't mean this just from you guys, but teachers overall are not seeing it. I am asking that you have our backs. The changes in public education are alarming. The micromanagement of schools by the state and federal government is doing more harm than good. It is harming students, teachers, administrators, and communities. Our energy and resources are being spread too thin, and students will pay the price. It is time for school committees all over this country to remember that we live in a democracy, and use your voices. I'm asking that you don't accept every mandate from Augusta and Washington without a fight, or at least without question. I don't think there's a person in this room who truly believes that as a group, politicians know best about anything, much less the education of our children. Sadly, teachers don't have a lot of power to affect change. For some reason, not sure what it is, but when teachers question anything at all, from contracts to government mandates, we're portrayed as ungrateful, lazy, greedy, or whiny. When school committees start questioning the government mandates and funding formulas, the politicians will have no choice but to listen. If you respect us, fight for us. Make some noise so that our well-trained and experienced staff can give students of this community and this state the best education possible. And I promise, I will not do this again.
Is Karen Cronk here? I guess she wasn't able to make himself.
Anyone else? Andrew.
Andrew Marley. Andrew Marley, I've got a daughter that's a junior, a high school here, and a son that's seventh grade. And I promise, I'm not here to talk about your side or your side. I'm here to talk about the people caught in the middle. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk about the merits of the kids that sat in, or the merits of the kids that laughed, or the merits of the kids that went to class. But what I am here to tell you is, as a parent of a junior, who I know takes her education very, very seriously. I was really bothered by the fact that my daughter, the night before that sit-in happened, is coming to me looking for me, or her mother, to call the school and make up some excuse why she doesn't have to be there the next day. I completely believe what you said about that there's no teacher involvement in that, that's fine, and I'm not here to debate that. But unfortunately, in this situation, the facts to a lot of the students really didn't matter. What I can tell you is, there was an email sent around amongst the students the night before that, in which there was a fairly lengthy list of faculty that was listed that was behind that. I'm not saying that that wasn't generated by students, I'm not saying that there was any merit to it. But what I am going to tell you is, that Hannah and many of her friends that sat in my living room that night, were thoroughly concerned about going to class that day if they chose not to be part of that sit-in. And so, I'm here to tell you that as a parent, that really bothers me. I can appreciate your side, as a taxpayer, I can appreciate your side. But where, where this has all ended up, in the newspaper, and on Facebook, and God knows how many coffee shops, which you know you're not going to stop, but, I'm concerned as a parent, when I've got a daughter, like I say, that takes her education as serious as she does, and she finds herself in a situation where she really doesn't dare go to school the next day. Of course, as a father, you tell her, no, don't worry about it, teachers are professionals, which I wholeheartedly believe you all are. But you know, then when Mr. Gory writes a letter to the editor praising some, and you know, maybe I'm reading more into it, but kind of making the ones that God excused absences, sound like somehow, they were less of, I don't know what, you know, that bothers me. Like I say, I can appreciate both sides of it. I know this is how you folks make your living, I know you're trying to look out for the community. All I ask, as a parent, is that everybody realize there are people caught in the middle of this. And like I say, I'm not saying their education's lacking any of that, but I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes when stuff's put out in public, it puts these kids in a hard And so, you know, I just ask going forward, that, you know, if you've got problems with the school, go directly to, you know, just try to keep the kids out of the middle of it. That's all I'm here to ask.
Thanks Andrew.
Anyone else? Mark?
Could I just reply to Mr. Marley?
No, I think we got, I think Andrew said his stuff, and you know, I mean, I think we've-
Okay, I can talk with him afterwards.
You know, afterwards, I think sometime, and it's fine. So is there a student, any students that'd like to speak or anything? Alright. And again, thank you, and you know, that kind of goes back to what I said in the first place, you know, we have a process of the negotiations, and we respect that, and we can show the teachers how, and Mark has explained to all the teachers what can be discussed and what cannot, and we just hope that everyone adheres to that, so, because even though we're here for the community, the school board, but we're here for the students also, as well as the faculty, and we want everyone to believe that, so that is what we're here for, and we'll continue to be here for, and we just, we're looking for a resolution to this. So if anyone else has anything to say, we'll go on to the next item, also. Okay, school committee recognition, nothing. Cory Chase and Nick Scott will be here to present.
Thanks for having us present tonight. Cory and I do a unit, and we've been doing it for quite a while, it's called Project Citizen, and tonight, we'd like to just tell you a little bit about it, and then show you a sampling of what students produce during this project. And so, Project Citizen is essentially a six-week unit. We've been doing it for the past eight years, and it's of the expeditionary kind of learning style. Apple would refer to it as a project-based learning. Essentially, they're the same thing, just a different name. And what that means is that it's a student-centered project that's research-based. And so, we have really four phases that make up Project Citizen. The first one is what we refer to as our topic selection. And so, the whole idea behind Project Citizen is that kids pick a problem that they see as concerning to them, it could be very local, like a school issue, it could be a state issue, it could be a town issue, or even a national issue. And so, they break off into pairs, maybe three. Some people tackle it all by themselves, but they pick a topic that they want to study. So it's very unique to them. And then they go ahead and they research, and they research in a variety of ways, which we'll talk about in just a second. Then they have to summarize the problem that they've been studying, and then they have to look at what other people have done to potentially solve this problem, and then propose their own solution to the problem. So it's a very in-depth kind of project that is very, very demanding of the kids. And so, whoop, flipped the wrong way, sorry about that. Okay, so what they actually produce. During this process, they end up producing essays and persuasive paper pieces, so it's very language arts-heavy. They also will complete an oral presentation piece, which we'll see an example of tonight, as well as they create a documentary film surrounding their topic as well, using their technology that every student has. And so, Ms. Chase is going to talk a little bit about how we use the technology.
Alright, so the nice thing about this project is it's a cooperative unit between social studies and language arts, and also the technology piece. We've been talking a lot about the iPads, I've been here, so I've been able to hear about the iPads. And we thought that it would be a good way for you guys to see the way the middle school's using the iPads through documentary film. And so, one of our assessments is through documentary film, which is an iMovie, and we're going to show you one of those tonight. But it's also kind of a whole step process, because we first have the kids pick their topics, and we have them put it in Google Drive, if you don't know what that is. The kids are able to share things between each other on their iPads, and so if they're taking notes on their topic together, which they research online, they're able to put it in color codes, and also share it with each other, so they can see the articles and the places that they've gotten the information. And each of them will have kind of that cooperative learning to create their first paper. So we use Google Drive quite a bit on the iPads. We also do a piece where they do interviews with community members or experts in the field which they've studied. And they do that in a number of different ways on their iPads. They can Skype, we had, one group this year was able to Skype when they were talking about Taylor tags. If you've heard anything about the Taylor tags, that's one of the issues that one of the kids tackled, and they were able to talk to the Darbo's, which are starting the Taylor tags through Skype. They send out emails to people for interviewing, and they also have Facebook, which we use, and they also have their phones, that they can also call people and do the interview process as well. We also complete surveys. We use Survey Monkey, we've used that quite a bit. The kids post kind of questions to ask, and send it out. We really used Facebook this year a lot, and parents who were great, the parents were great to send it out on Facebook, and have them take the surveys that the kids generated, the questions. And just a little thing over there is all the different ways in which they can research through their technology. Did I forget anything, Mr. Scott?
Nope, I mean, the Survey Monkey's really cool, because you know, most people know how to research online. We have gone through that since now they're in third and fourth grade with proper internet research. But this, creating a survey and then getting real-time feedback to a problem that's very local is very powerful, right? So if you need information from lobstermen, you can contact DMR, they can give you some email addresses, and boom, or perhaps their parents are a lobsterman, they can get that information from people that, it really matters, right? It's not just some vague survey where people from Massachusetts were answering, it was from people from our community. So that's really cool and really powerful stuff. Now, what we'd like to do is show you an example of-
Do you want to do the, do you want to do the presentation first? Mr. Scott, do you want to do technology first?
Oh, if you ladies like to do it first, that's fine.
Okay, so part of our, part of our piece here is that we create a board. I'm big into having some visual when the parents come to the open house that we have at the end of this, so I like to have a visual with the kids to be able to use it, so maybe this is my old-school stuff, but I love the posters. And so this, you are able to see what the kids produced. It talks about their writing piece, and it also shows on the Survey Monkey their surveys that they've taken. And we also do a lot around oral presentations, we think it's important to have that public speaking aspect before they hit the high school. So we worked a lot on how do you speak, how do you prepare, having your note cards, and these two girls did a really nice job for us, and they did a really nice job at the open house, all the kids really did. And so, we thought that we would have them present to you tonight kind of what was at the open house, I know Brian was there to see it, but we thought that that would be nice to have for you guys to see tonight. So we're going to hear from Riley and Olivia.
Over the past six weeks, Olivia and I have been studying the use of performance-enhancing drugs in high school and college levels. We've been able to identify the problem, find alternative policies, and propose our own policy. For the problem summary, we found that there are many health effects that came along with the use of steroids, including liver failure, and increased risk of prostate cancer and blood clots. And once these happen, they're unable to be undone. And there are the gender-specific issues that come along with it, such as female facial hair and male balding. The mental effects have proved themselves to be even more serious than the physical effects. The steroids promote aggression, and while that's good in the field, on the field or on the court, it's not so great in your regular life, it's not just something you can turn off, and you can harm yourself or your peers. And there are also suicidal thoughts. But most of all, we found that acquiring steroids is becoming way too easy. With the technology we have now, it's just a few clicks of a button, and they can be shipped to your front door. The school iPads also aren't blocking them, so we could get on and have them sent to our door. And one in 20 teens are admitting to using the performance-enhancing drugs, and that's only the teens that are admitting to it, so we've found that it's becoming quite a serious problem, and they're heavily abused. And 100% of the people we surveyed believe that performance-enhancing drugs should not be allowed to be used in competitive sports. So to sum things up, performance-enhancing drugs may help in the game, but not in the game of life. There's a vicious cycle that goes along with it. If I decide to take one pill a day, and Olivia wants to be better than me, she'll take two, which would maybe make me want to take three, and it'll get to the point where you'll be taking so many, your body can't tolerate it. We believe that performance-enhancing drugs shouldn't be allowed in competitive sports. We found two alternative policies that stuck out to us, but just didn't quite meet the requirements we wanted. The NCAA has put some punishments in place. With your first offense being caught using these drugs, you have a one-year ban in practices and games. With your second offense, you have a full ban, and that creates structure and scares kids out of using the steroids. The clean athletes and some coaches would approve this, because they want to keep a really level playing field, and make sure everything is fair. But the drug-using athletes and other coaches would oppose, because as we know, if the team is doing better, the coach's salary is getting better. So they just pretend the problem isn't actually happening. But we didn't pick this because it only covered college, and there's four years of high school for kids to become addicted, and it's hard to break this. We also found that there's a Senate Bill 8 in Texas. Many Texas schools are requiring drug tests in grades nine through 12, and that'll scare some kids or catch them in the act. The opposers to this policy would be the drug-using athletes and coaches, as well as the companies that are producing these drugs, because they won't have as high of a profit. But the people that would like this are the clean athletes, most coaches, and some parents. We found it to be unconstitutional because it forces kids into taking drug tests, and thus invading their privacy. Now, for our proposed policy. We would like the government to sponsor the Atlas and Athena programs. These programs teach all about the use of performance-enhancing drugs, or steroids. So there are many advantages to our proposed policy. First, it educates kids about many healthy alternatives, like nutrition. And it educates kids on how to refuse drug offers, which can be very hard for some kids because of all the pressure put on them by their parents, coaches, teammates, and any other group, family members. Atlas and Athena are gender-specific classes, which means that they can target gender-specific issues like male balding or female facial hair. And also educates kids on the many negative side effects, for example, liver failure. There are very few disadvantages to our policy. First, not all kids are interested in the long class about performance-enhancing drugs. In some kids' eyes, it might even be boring. And since this is a traveling program, it has a high cost. We estimate about $200 per visit, and we would like the programs to visit one to three times per year. People for this policy include coaches, parents, and teachers, because of course, they would want to keep their kids safe. Clean athletes want to protect their friends, and they want to keep that level playing field that steroids have stripped away. People who would oppose this policy would be athletes using steroids because they want to continue, drug dealers and makers because they would lose a lot of money in business, and coaches who are cheating because as their team's performance increases, their salary increases also. The federal government, states, and schools are responsible for carrying out our policy. We would also like the Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services to sponsor our policy. It is constitutional because it doesn't violate anyone's freedom of speech, freedom of religious expression, taking or violating anyone's rights or property, or invading anyone's privacy whatsoever. So for our action plan, we plan to contact Senator Susan Collins, so that we can introduce this to the Senate. We need funding to get this program in every school. As I said before, we'd like it to visit schools one to three times per year. These programs not only welcome athletes, but any other students interested in learning about the use of performance-enhancing drugs. Riley and I strongly believe that our policy will be effective in America.
Thank you girls, that was really well done. And so, that's one piece of what the kids would produce. Their writing samples are also on the board here. The other component is that they have to take that same information and create like a documentary-type video that would also go through those four stages of Project Citizen. And here's a, an example of a project done by a group of three kids in the eighth grade.
People take large amounts of prescription drugs to get high, or to result in some other effect on their bodies. The males most commonly abuse drugs to get high, while girls typically do it to lose weight. Prescription drug abuse is common among a large variety of ages. Also, prescription drug abuse is the third-most abused substance in the United States. pills for just sleep meds and pain meds are abused. Once drugs are abused, it can become addictive.
Drugs can be abused in many different ways. Farm parties are one way in which people misuse drugs. At farm parties, people mix together a large amount of un-prescribed prescription drugs and take them. But there are solutions to this. One solution is allowing pharmacists to prescribe Narcan. Narcan is a prescription drug that helps reverse the effect of some other drugs. The disadvantage to this is that pharmacists are trained to handle drugs, they are not trained to prescribe them. Pharmacists would need to be careful about prescribing the drug, and only prescribe them when needed. One of the advantages to this is that people wouldn't have to go through the long process of getting a drug they need in a short amount of time. They can get it much easier by going to a pharmacy and getting- They can get it much easier by going to a pharmacy and getting it prescribed by a pharmacist. We think that many people in the community would support this solution.
Another solution is for doctors to track and record their patient's history with drugs. By doing this, no one would be prescribed the same drug at the same time by different doctors. The disadvantage to this is that it would be more time-consuming.
Another solution is having National Drug Take Back Day. An advantage to this is that there would be less drugs in the world to be abused. A disadvantage to this is that not all people give back their drugs.
Of our three solutions, we think having doctors track and record their patient's history of drugs is the best. This solution is our proposed policy. We think is the best for many reasons.
One reason is because it doesn't cost a lot of money and it isn't very hard to do. Another reason being it limits the amount of drugs in the world.
The one and only disadvantage to this is that it's more time-consuming for the doctors. Despite the few extra minutes it takes, it is well worth it. In our action plan, we would raise awareness of the policy to gain voters' attention and gain support. In order to make our policy a bill, we would propose the policy to a member of Congress. The bill would go through the bill-to-law process, which ends with the President passing the bill. The policy would be federal because all doctors across the U.S. would have to abide by this policy. If the policy is passed, a lot fewer deaths by prescription drugs would be recorded.
There are several ways in which you can help stop or prevent prescription drug abuse from happening, and you can do many of them from your own home. First, make sure your prescriptions are always locked away from children or other family members. Next, you can always make sure you use prescriptions properly. This will set a better example for the people and children in your house. Another way is to only use drugs when absolutely necessary. This goes for pills such as ibuprofen, too. Always remember, by just using a few pills the wrong way, you could become addicted. Always be cautious when using drugs. In the end, prescription drug abuse is a growing problem in the United States. Things such as stealing drugs from parents and using drugs improperly are both common.
So, again-
Pretty dramatic at the end.
Pretty dramatic, yeah.
It's pretty dramatic.
And that's our project. So thank you for giving us the time to present.
Nick and Cory and the girls, I just want to say we're quite impressed with the presentation. And you're eighth graders, right? So I mean, that's a lot of, I mean, that's, so we're just saying to stephens, well, this is just the eighth-grade class, so Nick and Cory are to be commended, too. It's just, it's your class, but the class before, I mean, just the confidence and everything else, and it was impressive. You should be, feel good about yourself.
Well done.
Very well. Great. Any other questions or comments regarding?
Yeah, I would just echo that. You girls did a nice job. Very composed, very mature, spoke very clearly, represented yourself and your class very well. Nice job. And thank you, Nick and Cory.
Well, now, if we have a helpful presentation, we know who to come to help us. So thank you very much. Very good calling. Okay. And Cory and Nick, again, thank you for bringing them to class, because that's what, you know, implementing, we have all this stuff, the technology, and we trust the, and believe that the teachers and administrators are using it. And by seeing this, I mean, it just makes us, and I don't know, it's Channel 7 here, to see the community that they are using it. So that's great. Okay. And then we can go to Carl.
All right. So the CBS 13 WGMU School Spirit Challenge pep rally, which occurred on February 27th, went incredibly well. For it, we definitely beat out Windsor High School spirit-wise, whom we shared live broadcasting airtime with. With the hashtag #schoolspirit13, social media blew up with our staff and student body cheering and rallying, sporting our school colors of blue and gold. Last Friday, March 6th, six students, including myself, with art teacher and student council advisor Ms. Manon Lewis, got ready at 3:00 a.m. to attend the finale hosted at the CBS 13 WGMU news studio in Portland. There, we learned that BRHS collected 23,971 pounds of food to add to the cumulative amount of over 300,000 pounds just for the winter edition of season four. And before the challenge in past years, the Good Shepherd Food Bank representative mentioned that annually, they would, they used to raise only 30,000 pounds of food, so being able to multiply that by 10 is really, really awesome. We also learned that over the four seasons of the WGMU School Spirit Challenge, the Good Shepherd Food Bank beat their goal of collecting 1 million pounds of food by collecting over 1,108,000. After we even got to tour the studio and learn more about media and the process that the news studios go through every morning. The BRHS Drama Club attended the One X Festival in Rockland, also on March 6th, to perform their play Ladies Night at the Globe, full of hilarious Shakespearean indie windows. Their play won them fourth place. The student body has also started up indoor soccer, which was inspired by the eighth-grade tournaments. Five teams were created, the United States, Argentina, Spain, Brazil, and Italy. A tournament will be held later this month to crown the champion country.
Any of the teachers involved?
They can join if they want. Just as spectators usually.
Thanks, Carl. Any questions for Carol or any?
Thank you.
Nothing for me, and I can go to Mark.
Just a couple of things going on since we last met. A week ago, this past Monday, our Reading Lab, Title I Reading Lab, sponsored Dr. Seuss Day on March 2nd. And I'm happy to report that we had 13 community volunteers come in and wear one of those Dr. Seuss hats and read to our kids. And it was, it was really well done, the Reading Lab. They have it down pat, they know exactly what they're doing, and they pull it off every year. March 17th, which I think is next Tuesday, the Leprechaun Leap is going to be held over at Hendrix Head Beach at 3:30. The purpose of this is to raise money for the local Special Olympics. All the money raised goes to our local Special Olympians. So if you would like to come and jump in some freezing cold water, or you would like to donate, feel free to come and join, because there, every year, there's people that do it. Another thing that we're going to be hosting on the 27th of March, Mrs. O'Connell does this annually in the spring to raise money for the music program. We're going to be holding a talent show, so if you have a particular talent that you'd like to share, just let Mrs. O'Connell know and you can audition for her. The last time I was with you, I shared a couple of things from our PE department. This time, I'm going to share something from our 5-6 wing. Two things I'd like to share that, one thing goes on all the time, one is a specific time of year that it's done. But the first thing is, Mrs. Arnold has her fifth graders every Monday morning do something she calls a five-minute frenzy. She starts this in the beginning of the year. And what it is, is kids doing their times tables up through 12. And initially, when they start in the beginning of the year, kids might get, you know, say 30 facts right. Well, right now, they are at, out of the 30-some-plus kids in the class, there's six kids away from having everybody do 100 facts, and that's their goal. If they do happen to reach that goal, Mr. Task gets to throw a pizza party for them, so it's, I hope that will be money well spent. The, let's see. Another thing I wanted to report about that was when I was talking to Mrs. Arnold about it, she said it's even gotten to the point now where kids go home and they will do the times facts on their parents. And she said, "It's kind of cute, we can get kids coming back, you know, kind of smugly." "I beat my dad last night." So-
My kids are rapping.
Yeah.
Seriously, it's been tough, I guess.
The next thing I'd like to share is sixth-grade social studies. They're not quite done with the project, but they'll be up next week. And what the kids do is, Mrs. Johnson has the kids do a timeline of their own life. And it's kind of interesting to see which points along that timeline that they find are interesting. They may include things from local government, they may include things from national government, but no timeline is exactly the same, and it's kind of interesting to see what they find relevant over the course of their lifetime. The last thing that I have to share with you is that we have indoor soccer going now. We have, depending on the night, 50 to 60 kids on three different teams, and there's some big kids sometimes that join in as well. And that's our season between sports seasons, when basketball ends and the spring sports begin. That's all I have for you tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you.
Thanks, Mark. And Brandon's in the class, I believe.
Yes.
And Dan.
All right. Just a few things to report on this evening. Obviously, I want to take one last chance to mention the School Spirit Challenge. I've been a broken record for a while, but I got to tell you, for those two hours, it was dynamite. Captain America made a special guest appearance. Thanks, Brian. I mean, a lot of people made appearances, and a lot of the kids, I couldn't believe it, you know, and I was trudging in at 5:20, and I am not a morning person, I will tell you, and it struggled. It wasn't 3:00 a.m., but it still hurt a little bit. But, you know, I was nervous. I was thinking, oh, gosh, you know, are we going to get a roomful of teenagers here at 6:00 a.m.? And it's like, all of a sudden, I turned around, the whole school's there, and the community's there, and Eileen's there, and it's like, it was just awesome. You know, I mean, too many great performances to mention, too many great thank yous to mention. You know, the swim team was awesome, I loved their medley. And if you would have told me that the wrestling team would have-
Yes, it was awesome.
If you would have told me the wrestling team would have stolen the show with a dance routine, I, Alan and I knew they were doing a dance routine. Let's just say they exceeded our expectations. They got a 4+ in the rubric. So, just thank you to everybody. It was a great, great showing the school spirit for us. I was really proud to be the principal, I can tell you. As Carl mentioned, Ladies Night at the Globe was hilarious. It was a kind of a spoof on a Shakespearean play, instead of all men actors dressed up as ladies, it was all ladies dressed up as men, and it was hilarious. Comedies are really tough to pull off, especially at the high school level. Most of the time, you go to those festivals and there's a lot of dramatic performances and things like that. And they were really funny. They did a great job. So, I know this is on TV, but there's no way we got fourth. We really, anyway. Mary and I talked about that for a while the other day. Tomorrow, actually, we have another performance coming. It's a professional performance from, through a grant from New Hope for Women, looking at cyberbullying, ramifications of online activity, trying to help students work through issues around when things go online, they're permanent, just those kind of content, concepts there. So they'll be in tomorrow, coming to us from Massachusetts, I believe. Next week, we start our Smarter Balance Assessment testing. Hopefully, we'll get through that without any glitches. I'm sure there'll be a couple, but it'll be okay. You know, we'll put our heads down, we'll get through, and I'm sure the kids do a great job. We're planning on four half-day sessions for that right now, between now and May, so we're spreading it out so that we don't interfere with our SAT and AP exams. National Honor Society, for those who don't know, Alan is actually our NHS coordinator for a few years now, so he's coordinated that process. We have our new INDs in place, and we're having our induction on March 19th at 6:00 p.m. in public. Welcome. Anybody that would like to come, please feel free. Other than that, the last thing I want to report on is, is talk to you somewhat about our NEASC accreditation process. We've been asked to participate in a pilot for NEASC. We are one of 10 schools in New England participating in it, only one of two in Maine. And really what it looks at, we're in now the very, very beginning of our self-study process. As I've talked about, there are seven standards that we need to show evidence of how we're doing on these standards. Basically, that's a really condensed version of a really long process. But we're at the very beginning part of our self-study phase now, where we're starting to collect evidence and to report out to each other. We have a steering committee, and then we have a committee, standing committee for each seven standards. Carol McKenna is our steering committee chair. So last week, Carol, Barbara Greenson, and myself went down to just outside of Boston. And it's really looking around collection of evidence, using digital methods to do it. We're going to be doing everything online, whereas before, if you went to a school at an accreditation time, it was like they had these tubs and reams of paper and great big binders trying to show evidence, because when the committee comes in 2016, they're going to say, "Okay, in your self-study, you said you're doing this around curriculum and instruction. Show us." So now we get to do all of that digitally through a secure server. So it took some training, but I'm excited. I think it's going to help expedite the process somewhat, and, you know, I think we're an apple-distinguished school. It just makes sense that we're going to be one of the schools to take this on, you know, in the digital format and pioneer that. So I'm excited about that, and we have plans for our Annual Wellness Day in the works. That's a day that we collaborate with Lincoln County Healthcare, and lots of community partnerships come together, provide a day around helping students learn more about social, emotional, personal wellness. That's coming up in early April. And that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
Regarding NEASC, Dan, you know, watching the girls, what they did there, technology, and I think you alluded to it, where you're doing a lot of technology, is there some stuff that you can do at home regarding the school so that you don't, you know, because it's cost, it's not cheap to put them up for a week? Doesn't the team go to a school for a week or so? Is there stuff that they can do via technology so that they don't, you know, on the web or internet so that, I mean, it just seems like, just seeing what these presentations have done, you know, to step it up, so that you could do a lot at home as opposed to having to come in and be in the physical plant?
It's not- I don't think NEASC would ever go for that, to be honest with you. That's something that's well beyond our control. We certainly work beyond the school day, trying to put this together and trying to put our reports together. The people that are evaluating us are actually practitioners, so it's fellow teachers, administrators, people like that, that are volunteering their time. So really, the way it's going to expedite is our time as far as collecting materials. I don't know that we'll ever see a savings as far as them not coming here. I mean, that's a really outside-of-the-vox idea and would be great, but it is expensive. I certainly won't shy away from it. It's an expensive process, it's an expensive, it's expensive to be accredited.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think it's just something that we want to be accredited, we have to, we got to bite the bullet.
But when students and families are trying to assess where they want to go to school, I mean, that's one of the criterias that some families look at, is this an accredited school?
Sure.
Which, right?
Yeah. It certainly would be if I was.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I would just add, thank you very much for the effort that you put into that School Spirit Challenge. It was very clear, I'm sure there was a lot of people involved in supporting it, but it was very clear that you were fully invested. And to talk about broken records, I've said it before, you know, teachers and the administrators, set the school climate, you set the tone, you build that culture, and, you know, an event like that does a great job of setting a great culture and a great tone in the school. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thanks, Dan. Is, kind of the school spirit, can people go on the website, because we're talking TV, if they haven't seen it? Can they go to GME and still get a clip?
Yeah, and then, I don't know, John, are we going to put something on July 7th?
It's on.
It's on still? Awesome.
It's on the web.
Don't forget the Boothby Registers video.
Yeah, very nice clip.
Let's not.
Yeah. Katrina was on my speed dial throughout this whole thing. "Hey, we got something great coming up, can you come up?" Boom, she was there. That was awesome.
Nice, Dan. And Alan?
I don't have a whole lot to report, because we're in between seasons. We had our Winter Sports Bag put on March 3rd, which I thought went very well. The boosters do a great job setting up the gym, providing desserts. Lisa Carboni was our guest speaker, delivered a great message. And we're certainly appreciative that she did that.
I do appreciate it coming anyway.
I appreciate it. I remember my family would be a guest speaker.
Hey, Jack.
We had spring sports signups in the main office, and we, looks like we have enough participants to field all our sports teams with numbers to spare, which is great news. Pitchers and catchers begin on March 23rd, and the rest of the spring sports begin on March 30th, you know, assuming that we have fields to play on. And in regard to the School Spirit Challenge, I do think that, you know, a lot of people had a hand in it, but especially, I'd like to, you know, recognize, Dan had, you know, great ideas, you know, he had the quilt that he had auctioned, he had the T-shirts made up, he had the online Facebook. I mean, he-
I'll pay you later for this.
Very instrumental in raising a lot of money, and, you know, a lot of staff members. But I would really like to specifically recognize Manon Lewis and Brian Dion. You know, that week, that week leading up to that, the cameras being here, they worked tirelessly, they, you know, great ideas, and they pulled it off, and I think they should be recognized for that specifically.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Alan.
Okay. And do I leave?
Well, the best news I have to announce tonight is our velvettorian for the class of 2015 is Courtney Brewer. And our salutatorian is Sinead Miller. I did call Dan to find out where the girls were going to school and I think they're both at this point undecided. But a huge congratulations to those two young women who have worked very, very hard for this recognition.
It's really hard to think we're talking about graduation already. It's like, so... And now on to something really boring is the current budget and the cash flow report and our extras. Hildy? There are extras. As of the end of February, if we're looking at our revenue, we have received thirty-six point seven nine percent of our revenue. Our February revenue was $720,000. We have $3,425,000 remaining. And our year-to-date revenue has been, to date, is $5,886. I did do a projection on our tuition revenue and we will be receiving all the tuition revenue that we had budgeted for, plus about $100,000 more for some unexpected students that have come in. So, we'll be receiving a little bit more money on our revenue. As far as our expenditures, at this point, we have thirty-six point five percent remaining of our budget. Our February expenditures were $720,000. We have 3.4 million left. And if you look at the very bottom of this graph, if you look at February, we had thirty-four point five two percent remaining in 1314. For 1415, we have thirty-six point five three. So, our spending track is right on par with previous years. So, I expect to finish with a good, strong financial finish for the year.
Questions?
We have March 13th, we have our upcoming Marzano training for our staff for Domain One. As you know, for the new teacher evaluation system, we had to develop a new system with a new framework. And we chose the Marzano framework. We have a team of teachers and administrators that have been working for a good, solid year now on developing a plan for the district. One of the criterias that we provide training for the system, the framework that we have adopted. We did a Domain One training last August for people that were able to attend. And we are doing Domain One again. The teachers had been working on Domain One throughout the year. I think it will be, I think it will be easier for those that are attending the training this Friday than the ones that attended the training in August because they'll have some background and some knowledge of information based on Domain One. So, that will take place for all of our staff here. The Educator Effectiveness Committee will not attend that training because they did that in August. They'll be working on the plan that whole day. And then, so that will be the work of our district. We'll have Georgetown, obviously, Southport, Edge come join us here for the day. And the training will take place at the high school from 8:00 to about 2:30. On Monday, our administrators and several teacher leaders will also be attending day three of our inter-rater reliability training. And this is three days to try to get administrators to look at a classroom, a clip of a classroom, a teacher teaching a classroom, and try to get us to all kind of agree that we would rate the teacher in a similar fashion or within a same score or a same category, whether they're developing, applying, beginning or innovating. And so, it's trying to make us come together and have a similar lens to what we would see in a classroom. Not just what are the teachers doing, but what are the kids doing. So, we've had two days and we'll have day three on Monday. We have seventy-five participants. We have twenty-nine teachers coming from RSU III. We have eight teachers coming from RSU II, which is Hollowell. RSU III is...
Unity.
Unity. We have Camden Hills, five teachers from Cannon Hills coming. We have five teachers coming from Union 69, which is Hope, Appleton, Lincoln. And we have fifteen teachers coming from our neighbors, AOS 93. They've all also chosen the Marzano framework. So, we've been working together as a group. It's kind of been fun to working with other administrators and teachers across the mid-coast region. And so, that will take place. That will be our final Marzano training for the year. And then, next year, we will open up our school year with training for Domains II, III and IV. So, we will complete the training cycle for Marzano. So, that's where we're at with that. As far as our budget revenue, last meeting, I reviewed the, I did a recap of our budget expenditures and we showed an increase of $256,000, which is about a 2.8% on expenditures. At the same time, I discussed that we are losing $221,000 in revenue, plus another ninety that was a one-time offset to help with teacher retirement. We're going to have a little bit more in tuition next year, but the offset is that we are probably looking at about a $477,000 deficit in our budget. So, if you look at our 256 expenditures and then a decrease in our revenue of over $300,000, it will be a little bit less than that. Right now, we're projecting a decrease, an increase in budget of assessment and expenditures of about $477,000. That's a pretty good hole to dig out of. That's about a six percent over last year. I don't think that if I brought you a budget that was a six percent increase, you would probably tell me to go back and sharpen my pencil again. So, right now, I feel like we're in a holding pattern. We haven't, we are obviously waiting for the fact-finding report to come. The numbers for the teacher salaries, I'd like to be able to tighten those up. And hopefully, if we can come to some resolution, we'll have some actual numbers. That would be helpful. Our health insurance rates don't come out until the end of the month. That's also if they, for some reason, health insurance went up thirteen percent two years ago, went up nine percent last year. I understand there may be some cap to the increases. If, you know, if it comes in significantly lower, that could be a significant decrease to our budget. So, all this information will allow me to present a more accurate budget. Sorry. Will allow me to provide, to develop a much more accurate budget to bring to the board. I understand there's some conversations and I'd like to address that. The administrative team met last Thursday to go over this $477,000 issue that we have. And we looked at all of our budgets again. Every single department was looked at, every single staff, staffing level was looked at, class sizes are looked at. We do have two retirements that have come in right now. I believe I'm receiving letters for two, maybe three more. Once I get that information, that will be announced April 8th. That will have also an impact on how we move forward. I met with Skip and Mark earlier in the winter to talk about possible teacher transfers, of teachers going from one level to another, obviously within their impact area if we need to do that. We had that conversation just to make sure that the contract was being followed as far as their impact areas. At this point, and it's unfortunate that rumors or conversations have taken place about cutting positions. At this point, I don't have good enough information to even talk about cutting positions, about changing staffing levels or about eliminating or riffing any teachers. And there's a protocol to go through and it wouldn't be someone going to a teacher and just talking about it. It would be me going to Mark Gorey, sitting down, saying, "This is where we're at with the budget. This is what we need to do. This is what we're proposing." And that's how those conversations take place. So, at this point, I think having a conversation about any department and why it should remain where it is is a moot point because there is no conversation to riff or eliminate positions. We're hoping that with the retirements that we have and the staff that we have, that we can fill most of those retirements. I believe we will have to do some outside hires. And our goal, and the administrators are sitting at the table, as I said this, our goal is to make sure that we can save the existing current staff that we have that we will start the school year with next year. That's our goal right now. So, Dan, Mark, do you want to add anything to that or...
No, I mean, I think when we sat down, we said, "Nothing is on the table and nothing's off the table." That we need to look and see where areas of need are.
And any staff members that want to talk to me about this, I'd be happy to meet with them. We had a very candid conversation. We are having conversations. When you're looking at a $477,000 decrease, or I'm sorry, increase in your assessment, we are having the uh-oh conversations. But we're looking, we're not identifying anything other than the fact that what do we need to do now to save the staff that we have at the year so people aren't losing their positions? What kind of movement can happen? We have some teachers that are, you know, anxious to look to moving into a new position within the district. So, those are the conversations we've had. And it's really very disappointing that that's turned into, we're going to be cutting any positions at this point. That's not even on the table.
So, I think, you know, regarding your earlier remark about teachers speaking, I think it's kind of premature. I would suggest that teachers that have a question, speak to Eileen. Then, we do have the budget discussion because we're in a holding pattern right now. Give them that forum to be able to speak to.
My understanding is that teachers tonight were prepared not to speak to cutting of staff or riffing, but rather just repositioning. And I don't think the discussion was about anyone in particular, but just a philosophical approach to the special education program as it exists.
When we get into repositioning, that would be appropriate, but at this point, we're not even having that conversation. The only repositioning, the only transfers that we're talking about are the ones that I spoke to you about.
So that...
I mean, we can reposition ed techs. We have done that in the past. There are times when we don't have a need in one level, we have a need in the other, and we reposition or retransfer a teacher to that level.
Of course. I think that teachers tonight wanted to speak to philosophically the existing structure as to why that's best for students. And I don't think it was about, it wasn't questioning your ability to reposition, but just to talk about philosophically how the existing structure is best for the students.
I think what we'll do now is follow our agenda tonight that we have...
And put on the agenda.
And then, have that for another agenda and have that so that we can speak to. And if any of the teachers do have any concerns about their position or anything, speak to Eileen or the building administrator directly. That might save some of those. I'd just soon keep to the agenda that we have tonight, put that on the next agenda and then we can address it at that time.
So, there will be an agenda item for the next guy. Thank you very much.
So, at this point, given the budget that we have, given the lack of hard information that we have, I'm not sure where the board wants to meet this. We usually don't meet the second meeting in March.
I think, I mean, I don't know if any of you still, until we have the information, it seems like if we wait a month, we'll have more time, you know, for negotiations might be hopefully ended. Eileen, you have that information. We'll have more income revenue information. We'll have more health insurance information. We'll have more information to take the mush out of the budget and put it, you know, make it, to solidify it. So, I think if we just go to the, skip the next meeting and have one, I believe, is it April 8th?
April 8th.
April 8th. Is everyone in concurrence?
Quick question. When are folks required to submit their retirement?
There's no date.
There's no dates. There's no cutoff. So, we're not guaranteed that, you know, when we get to this next meeting that we have, we'll have a more complete picture.
I think by April 8th.
We think we will.
I think by April 8th, I've got to move forward with the information that we have.
We have at that date.
And that will move the June meeting, that will move our budget meeting from May up to June. That gives us another month.
Yep. Okay.
Excuse me, can I make a comment?
Your next one.
I'm Jean Koochey. I'm a special ed teacher in 34th grade. I just have a question about the process. When positions are eliminated, I mean, or programs, I should say, not positions necessarily, but programs are eliminated, is the school committee aware of everything that goes on around that? Excuse me, the impact that it has on the students or do you just see that something's been changed? Do you question it or...
I'm not aware of any elimination of programs.
No, I'm just meaning in general.
But usually, yes, usually, if, I mean, not having eliminated any programs. If we were, I'm sure that we would be engaged in the conversation. And, you know, just a case in point, last year, we had a music teacher that, the rumor was around that we weren't going to hire a music teacher. We did hire a music teacher. It was rumors that we weren't. But that was a, you know, parents came, kids came and just identified how important that program was. So, if there was a program to be eliminated, I think we would all be involved with the whole aspect of the person as well as the teacher as the kids.
I wanted to know.
Yeah, yes.
I have a question. It's nothing to do with elimination or programs or anything. It's to do with the budget. When the towns vote, I believe it's June?
May or June.
May or June. When the towns vote a budget in, and people have asked me this and I don't know what to answer them. So, that's why I'm asking you people. When people, when the communities vote in May or June for the school budget, right? They're approving that, those funds. People have meant, asked the question, "How come the money that was approved in last June, May or June, why is that, and our salaries were in that? How come something's being held up?" I don't know what to answer them. I didn't know if you do it in arrears or what, but the money has been approved by the townspeople last May or June for the budget, for the salaries for 2014, '15. And people have asked me why they haven't been, why the funds haven't been used for salaries, why we don't have a continuing contract. I know you can't talk to the contract, but I don't know, I guess the question is about the process. When the townspeople vote for the budget and it passes, how come the money is being held up? I guess that's what people are asking.
This is going to be a hard one to answer without getting into specifics, but we don't know how to apply it. There is money's been raised to put aside for teacher salaries while we negotiate. But I, right now, don't know how to apply that money. Period. I have no direction on how to apply it. So, I can't apply it until I have a contract that tells me how to apply it. That's about as simple as I can explain it.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? Are you asking, Hildy, something to this effect? That the townspeople said yes to a certain amount of money for teacher salaries to be spent?
Yeah, that's my question.
You're asking, "Why is that money in toto not being spent on teacher salaries?"
Because I don't know how to spend it. I don't know how to apply it. I don't have a contract in a salary scale that I can say, "Teacher A gets this, B..."
But you have an amount, though.
There is an amount that was raised that allows the board to bargain in good faith, allows the teachers and the board to bargain in good faith. Once this gets resolved, I'll be given a scale and then I can apply the funds that were raised.
If that money is not spent, all of that money is not spent, what happens to what's left over?
Anything at the end of the year, any money that's not spent at the end of the year, regardless of the salaries, health benefits or anything else, it goes into what we call a carryforward. Now, unlike municipal towns, I can't spend that money. So, when you see my revenues or when you look at our budget, any money that's brought forward is used to offset next year's expenditures. So, if I have $100,000 left over at this year, then next year, when I'm building the budget, I'm going to apply what I call a carryforward to reduce the assessment to the town. So, it has to be applied to offset for future expenditures.
Thank you. If there was, and if it was the opposite and whatever worked out, we didn't raise enough funds, we'd have to have another...
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
And that's where you would use carryforward funds. If we didn't have enough, then we would call another town meeting. I would say, "This is the resolution of the contract. We don't have enough, but we have some money in carryforward funds. The voters can vote to allow us to expend those funds." Which basically is allowing us to spend, once we vote in a budget, we can't spend more than that budget, more than we've been allotted. So, if we're allowed to spend $9 million, we can't spend $9,001. If we do have a general fund and we can go to the voters, they will give us permission to spend more money if that becomes the case.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I'm wondering, does the school board know about populations within the school? Like that the special ed population is rising and the incidence of children that was serving tend to be a higher population? I don't know if they're aware of that or not.
Oh, yeah.
That amount, those amounts of children are rising in our school.
We get a listing every year of the changes of what's going on. I don't know if it's a specific time, but...
I don't know if it's a specific time, but there's, in the form, we get a report of what's, what's going, what's changed for the upcoming year.
Okay, and you're aware of how many special ed tuition students we have that enter our school as well?
Yep, and it's broken down by category of need?
Yes.
And everything, yeah.
And then you're apprised of how many special ed students enter into our school district from out of town as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
Uh, at this point, I'm going to pass, turn this over to, uh, one more thing, actually, as much as, um, I believe we are going to be moving our budget, uh, meeting, our, for the CSD to, to June, hopefully it'll be early June. Budget reports from administrators and board chairs are due to Mary in my office by April 15th. That's the week, the monthly, yearly thing you write?
Month and a half.
Yeah.
Text, Dan.
I thought I should use a good chitney, you might remember it this year.
I'm going to send you the right one.
Here are my texts. So, uh, next, we'll, uh, take a second look at the policies that were brought forward the other day, our last meeting, and, um, if we have no other changes, then later in the agenda, you'll be asked by Larry to adopt those policies.
These are the same as that you handed off.
Yes, they're the same, so if you've got them still in front of you, you can pass it back this way, and then pass them along. So, the first one I passed back out is GBEB Staff Conduct with Students, and so I'd be happy to entertain some questions or thoughts.
I did have one question regarding this. It's, it says coaches and everything else, so, Alan, I think this goes to you, like, you know, I'm sure the teachers are aware of all, of this, but I just looked at, like, speaking to students, if a coach, say you hire a, a coach, is this given to them, is it, to explain the policies as to Facebook and then-
Yes, I, well, what I do is I have a coaches' meeting, and actually what I've been doing for the past few seasons is having that coach, coaches' meeting online, so it's in writing form to refer back to. I send them all the rules about, um, you know, appropriate and inappropriate, types, examples of, you know, this is appropriate, this is inappropriate type thing. And why I ask each coach to do is to reply to me and say, "Yes, I've read this, I understood."
Okay, yeah, because I'm just, the teachers are aware of it, just because they're in the community of the school, where sometimes now it seems like we're hiring some teachers that are in the school, I just want to make sure that they, you know, in defense of them, that they have this, so that they know what the rules and policies are.
Well, it's something we've had to get more explicit about. You know, honestly, it's something that through the last several years, we've had to become more conscientious of, and making sure that we're educating those people as they come on board, and, you know, it is something, Alan has a very extensive coaches handbook now, and-
Sure.
Throughout time, we've, we've, we've been more specific, so.
Thanks, Alan, thanks, Dan. I thought it was, I just wanted to clarify, I think, just about.
How about the middle school level? Is, who handles?
I don't handle the middle school, coach.
Mr. Deitch.
Mr. Deitch.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Thanks, Sean.
Questions from the board? Okay. All right, so the second, uh, policy for our second reading has to do with schools' online presence, and, um, both the policy, which is coming around first, the one page, and then the rules governing that policy here. And so, this is, again, in changing times, this is a, a policy that we're adding to our policy book to explicitly identify a couple of issues, and I shared those with you last time. One is to make sure that it's clear, our online presence isn't a public forum, or even limited public forum, and then to set down some guidelines for what we will or won't post on our, our district or our school wide web pages, Facebook pages, blogs, any of those types of things.
Any questions for Sean? Teachers, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Do you want to do a motion to approve the negotiation?
Yeah, why don't we do that, just move up to those where we just have the, the items, Andy. We're going to go to eight, item for school committee approval before we go into executive session. Recommend the school committee review policies, GBEB, Staff Conduct with Students, UNDC, School System Website, slash Online Presence, webpages, and UNDC-r-schoolsystemwebsite, Online Presence, webpages, administrative procedures for second reading and adoption. We have a motion? Stand. All in favor? Six, thank you, six, there. Thank you. No other questions, we'll go into executive session. After executive sessions, we-
Do you want to read this more?
Uh, yes, excuse me, just so you know why we're going into executive session, recommend the school committee go in to consider support staff labor contract negotiations pursuant to 1MRS-A4056D. So that's what our executive session will be in regards. Don't come out, we'll have no comment. Public participation is already moved to the third. Next meeting is April 8th, I believe, and then we'll adjourn.